...leaps and bounds while at Parkway North High School. Dr. Rhonda Page and our Tandrea Bentley have been instrumental in creating an exceptional and cohesive team. They've fostered a complete atmosphere of meaningful inclusion and are appropriately focused on post-secondary goals. They've embraced Cade's amazing paraprofessional, Mr. Young, who's been with Cade since he's been in fifth grade. He has been able to provide historical perspectives on successful strategies and is an active problem solver with the team. Mr. Matchner, next in line. Cade's case manager is an excellent communicator. He has strongly encouraged Cade to be present at all of his monthly meetings, and he expects Cade to be engaged in part of the decision-making processes for those meetings. By these actions, he's teaching Cade how to advocate for himself in all future endeavors. He is spot-on as a case manager, and we couldn't be more pleased. I mean, he is spot-on with everything. Paperwork, you name it, he is spot-on. He's great. Mrs. Serinski and Mrs. Whitehouse, Mrs. Whitehouse is here, Mrs. Serinski couldn't be here, have been instrumental in recognizing Cade's talents and trying to meet him where he is at. ELA is a challenging subject to keep PG-rated in high school, and Mrs. Serinski and Mrs. or Ms. Serinski and Mrs. Whitehouse have worked hard to be mindful of our wishes to not expose Cade to too much too soon, or in other words, they are keeping it PG for him, and we are so appreciative of that. Mr. Snow, last in line here, has just absolutely embraced Cade and his learning. Cade wants to name our potential new dog, Snowy. And he also wants to run track next year because of Mr. Snow, and Mr. Snow is a track coach at North, so needless to say, you've made an impression on our son. A shout-out to Coach Parks and Coach Prosser. These guys rock too. Cade fully participated on the JV golf team this year. I don't know if you all know that. They fully embraced his skills and accepted him exactly where he was at, which is a pretty good golfer, so we were excited. They wanted him to succeed and to have fun, and he just absolutely loved it, so it was awesome. It's our goal and our wish that these meaningful inclusion experiences not stop at Cade, that their experiences with Cade be paid forward to other students at Parkway North and within the district. We love that this whole team has been willing to think outside of the box. They genuinely want to make a difference for all students. We feel blessed and proud to be able to say that Team Cade has embraced and honored him as a learning student. The educators seek Cade for his abilities and his strengths. They do not operate around his disability, and they are not limiting him, and we really thank you for that. We have appreciated each and every conversation and question. It makes us all better at what we do for all students. We can't wait to see what next year brings. It's exciting. And I know Cade has also asked to say a little bit, and so he's just gonna take a minute or so to share what he'd like to share too. So, thank you.
Hi. Hi, guys. My name is Cade. I want to thank my teachers for helping me to learn at school. I do love school, as always. And my favorite classes are PE, Bio, Post-Doc, and also Academic Tab. They are my favorite classes because I have my friends in these classes. And then, I'm on best when I am with my awesome friends. Also, thanks for telling me I am a good role model. It makes me feel good. Hey, Margaret, can I give them the awards now?
You can.
Okay. Our ninth-grade principal from our freshman goes to Dr. Page.[317.44][317.44](applause) Yeah. Thanks for saying hi to me every day. It makes me happy. I like helping you in the office, as always.[344.22][344.22](laughter) Yeah. Okay, so our area coordinator goes to Mrs. Bentley. I like that you help everyone at school. You are really nice.[371.03][371.03](applause) Congratulations. Thank you, my case manager, Mr. Matchner.[392.31][392.31](applause) Thanks for doing my IEP the right way. It is going great.[405.03][405.03](applause) Okay, so, could I have Mr. Snowy?[426.02][426.02](laughter and applause) Congratulations. Mr. Snow, I think you are a, I think you are a cool cat. Thanks for doing Bio with me.[450.16][450.16](applause) And our last one is going to Mrs. Whitehouse.[466.84][466.84](applause) Hi, Ms. Whitehouse, you are a maniac.[480.31][480.31](laughter) And also, and I think you're great.[486.03][486.03](applause)
The maniac, the maniac is kind of an inside joke at school, so she knows what it's all
If the team from Belle Reve could come up?[517.02][517.02](applause) It doesn't want to stay up there. Okay. Hi, I'm Cassie Jennings, and before I begin, I just want to say that while I'm gonna call out some specific people by name, I think everyone on the team would tell you that they couldn't do it without any of the other members of the team. So, can't call everyone out by name, unfortunately, but there's some other people here who are awesome as well.[557.04][557.04](applause) When we moved from Philadelphia to St. Louis in the fall of 2014, one of our biggest concerns was how our two sons would adapt to the change. St. Louis was home for us, but they had only ever been here to visit. We were especially concerned about Ian, who was six at the time. Ian had been diagnosed with autism at age two and a half. Throughout his school career, he had a history of being moved from more inclusive to more restrictive placements. By the time we left Pennsylvania, he was in a private school for children with autism. It was a wonderful school, and they did great things for him, but he had no opportunity to interact with his typical peers on a daily basis. When we were preparing to move, we felt that it was most likely that Ian would go to a special school district school, and we were perfectly fine with that. In fact, we were a bit surprised and concerned when the team recommended placement in an ABA classroom at Belle Reve. We knew that the ABA would be what Ian needed, but were uncertain about placing him in a district school, as that had not gone well in his kindergarten in Pennsylvania. The team did see some difficult behaviors from Ian: falling on the floor, eloping, pushing other students, and tearing up his art projects. Since most of the behaviors occurred during the times that Ian was with his typical peers, we began to feel that it was time to switch to an SSD building. The team respectfully disagreed. They didn't want to give up on having Ian in their building. With the help of Beth Golden, a behavior plan was put in place to help curb these behaviors. And when we mentioned how great the adaptive PE, art, and music classes at Litzinger would have been for Ian, Dr. DeBosch let us know that she was looking at the building schedule for the 2015-16 school year to see if it would be possible to include adaptive art, music, and PE on a rotating schedule similar to the rotation that was already in place with the regular specials. That was in the spring of 2015. Starting in the fall of 2015, Belle Reve came through with the adaptive art, music, and PE classes, which Ian and his ABA classmates attend in addition to the time that he spends in specials with his second-grade class. We have seen so much improvement and are so happy to have Ian at Belle Reve. This year, he has also begun to spend more time with his second-grade class. Instead of just going to Mrs. Gardner's room to check in, he also occasionally spends time greeting his classmates and participating in their morning meeting. This sounds like a small thing, but there was a time when we would not have believed it to be possible. And of course, all of this is in addition to the general day-to-day awesomeness of the team. It is so clear that Annie, Beth, Sheila, and Jamie, and all of the staff at Belle Reve care as deeply about Ian's education as we do and want what is best for him. They communicate with us on a regular basis, value our input as parents, and work together every day to make sure that Ian's needs are met in as inclusive an environment as possible. Ian's not here because his bedtime is eight o'clock.[767.19][767.19](laughter) Oh, oh. Right. Sheila Gardner, Jamie DeBosch, Annie Twilman, and Beth Golden.[795.32][795.32](applause) Thank you.
(inaudible) Good evening, President Jacobs, members of the school board, Dr. Marty, and Mrs. Peazold. The Parkway Alumni Association has had another great year serving and supporting the Parkway community. I'm proud to be here today to share a few updates and upcoming opportunities. At Appreciation Night, we had the opportunity to hand out and sponsor the Teacher of the Year Awards and the Albert Awards. Just yesterday on Give STL Day, people throughout the country made donations in honor of their Parkway teachers, and even though the site closed and crashed early, we still received some great donations. In addition, just this past Monday, here at Central Middle, the Alumni Association hosted the 20th Annual Granting Dream Ceremony with over 500 dedicated educators, parents, grandparents, and siblings in attendance. This year, the Alumni Association granted 215 student grants, allowing these students to realize their dreams. And I'm proud to report that including this year's class of recipients, the Alumni Association has awarded over 3,200 grants totaling over $283,000 since the beginning of the program in 1996, and we hope to continue the program for many more years to come. The Parkway Alumni Association is looking forward to several future opportunities to connect with the Parkway community and certainly hope that you all can join in. On May 26, we'll celebrate the legacy of John Baker at the Jazz Concert at the Sky Music Lounge. On June 17, we'll have our 21st Annual Parkway Golf Tournament at Bear Creek Golf Course. On October 2, the Alumni Association will host Parkway Day at the Ballpark with around 1,000 Parkway people cheering on the Cardinals and our Teacher of the Year, Sasha Walkley, who'll be throwing out the first pitch. And lastly, we're still currently reviewing many outstanding Hall of Fame applications for the Hall of Fame induction ceremony for November 19. A special thank you to the board, to the administration, and all of the faculty and staff for all you do in helping to promote the Alumni Association and their programs each year. Next, we want to recognize the winners of the Martin Luther King Jr. New Year's Birthday Poster Contest. Could you, would you please join me in welcoming our Parkway NEA President, Pat O'Park.[983.57][983.57](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, board members, Dr. Marty, Ms. Peazold. It's my pleasure to present to you the 2016 winners of the Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Poster Essay Contest. This is a contest that is run every year through Missouri NEA, and the theme this year was "The Dream Continues." And I have to say, this is the first time I've ever had an opportunity to judge these, and I'm a high school teacher by trade, so I just have to say I was blown away by the creativity, the thoughtfulness in terms of the posters and the essays and the way they're put together, a real tribute to these kids, to their teachers, and to their parents. It was really impressive and far beyond anything I could ever do.[1032.16][1032.16](laughter) So, I'm gonna go through and read the winners to you, and then talk a little bit also about the fact that we also did very well at the state level and say a few things about that. So, from the kindergarten first-grade level, Ally Henry, Shenandoah Valley, first place.[1048.01][1048.01](applause) All right. In a tie for second place, Lillian Wells from Henry Elementary.[1065.58][1065.58](applause) Also, second place, Ashley Alt, also from Henry Elementary.[1079.33][1079.33](applause) And rounding out the Henry list here, Sanvi Banerjee, Henry, third place.[1094.78][1094.78](applause) All right, moving on to second and third grade. Landon Chen, Mason Ridge, first place, and also a state place holder.[1110.71][1110.71](applause) In second place, Jenny Crawford, Run Hollow. Jenny's not here with us this evening. In a tie for second place, Sarah Jones, Shenandoah Valley. She also is not with us today. In second place, a tie, Mia Carey, Shenandoah Valley, and Mia is here.[1140.28][1140.28](applause) And rounding out our second and third grade winners, Jamil Lee of Shenandoah Valley.[1161.75][1161.75](applause) I should point out that Jamil and Jenny both also placed at the state level. Fourth and fifth grade, Ronak Mahanti from Shenandoah Valley, also a state place winner.[1183.01][1183.01](applause) In second place, Campbell Morowski from Mason Ridge.[1192.92][1192.92](applause) Also, second place tie, Emma Lee from Shenandoah Valley, and she also is a state finisher.[1208.71][1208.71](applause) Third-place winner, Hannah An from Craig Elementary.[1231.01][1231.01](applause) And also in a tie for third, Sonali Paranjoti, also from Shenandoah Valley, and a state And we had one winner in the sixth or eighth-grade level. That was Sintu Kalabafi from West Middle, who was first place in Parkway and first place
President Jacobs, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mrs. Peazold, and Dr. Marty, good evening. I am so pleased to be here this evening to present to you two very accomplished groups of students. The first group is seven very distinguished and impressive Parkway High School students. These students were chosen from a pool of literally thousands across Missouri to participate in the exclusive Missouri Scholars Academy. The academy is a three-week residential program held on the campus of the University of Missouri in Columbia. This program provides a unique educational experience for only approximately 300 of our state's finest young scholars. The application process for participating was rigorous and involved not only academic achievement, but leadership capacity and creative problem-solving. Some of the characteristics the academy looks for in their selection process are intellectual curiosity, students with a broad range of interests, students with the ability to think analytically and conceptually, students who are self-starters and independent, students of social maturity, students who are honest and considerate or caring of others, students with the ability to express him or herself orally, in writing or in the arts, and finally, students who possess a sense of humor. As I say your name, if you could please come forward, from Central High School, John Also from Central High School, Jonathan Yin.[1390.15][1390.15](applause) From South High, Melissa Banky.[1400.47][1400.47](applause) From North High, Sarah Butterfield.[1410.61][1410.61](applause) I don't think Sarah was able to make it tonight. Also from North High, Salee Kemba-Kar.[1420.63][1420.63](applause) From West High, Heron Kumar.[1432.51][1432.51](applause) Also from West High, Alex Zhu. Okay, if you guys could stay up there as well. I'd also like to present to you Parkway's Missouri Scholars 100 students. The Missouri Scholars 100 is a program sponsored by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals and is a statewide recognition obtained by only 100 students all across Missouri. Each student nominated had to first meet criteria of an academic decathlon, which included 10 events designated to assure the academic strength of the student. To meet the decathlon requirements, the student must have a minimum GPA of 3.75, a minimum ACT score of 29, be ranked in the upper 10% of the class, and have taken upper-level courses in mathematics, science, English, and modern classical language. The student must also have excellent attendance, be an exemplary school citizen, and be involved in the school activity program. Parkway is pleased to introduce the following four students who have achieved the remarkable Missouri Scholars 100 status. As I say your name, if you could please come forward, from Central High, Sharonai Kumar.[1527.11][1527.11](applause) Also from Central High, Joshua Yang.[1540.83][1540.83](applause) Also from West High, Rachel Osborne.[1571.11][1571.11](applause) Rachel must not be here. These two groups of students are undoubtedly among the finest leaders from Parkway School District, and I'd like to send them off with the following words of wisdom from Peter Drekker. "Leadership is lifting a person's vision to higher sights, the raising of a person's performance to a higher standard, the building of a personality beyond its normal limitations." I hope that your experiences in Parkway and this amazing opportunity to be a part of either the Missouri Scholars 100 or the Missouri Scholars Academy helps each of you as you strive to develop your leadership potential and soar beyond your normal limitations. Thank you for proudly representing Parkway School District. And could I now have the principals please stand, and the parents also please stand, because we know that these students would not be here tonight without your support, support at home and at school. Congratulations to all of these stellar young men and women.[1641.08][1641.08](applause)
Well, thank you to these wonderful, outstanding students all the way from kindergarten up to high school. It's marvelous to see the things that they're willing and able to do. We thank them very much. We thank their families, teachers, your principals for joining us here tonight. We're honored to have you with us. And at this time, we're gonna take a brief break, and we'll resume the meeting in a few minutes. Thank you.[1678.72][1678.72](applause)[1679.72]
Additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, additions to the agenda, item 11.05, approval of personnel items and agenda item 11.13, authorization for disposal of surplus property. Modification to agenda item 1123, approval of renewal of discovery science for all elementary schools. 7.0, citizen statements. We have a few here. If you'll come to the podium and say your name and address, so we can be sure that we get a response back to you, we would appreciate that. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. And let's begin with Stephen Rutherford.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Rutherford. I live at 1929 Pine Run Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. I have two children at Central High, two at Central Middle, and one left at Highcroft Ridge Elementary. As some of you know, my family has hosted YFU students for 11 years now, every year a student from a different country. And we are here tonight to thank the board, the administration, and in our case, Central's principal, Tim McCarthy, for continuing to allow us to enroll YFU students at Parkway. My only wish is that more Parkway families would consider hosting. This year, just in Germany alone, there were about 20 kids whose dream was to be exchange students but could not come because there simply are not enough families. My family, our greatest gift that we've given our students or our children is hosting. Our children now have brothers all over the world. Even though the students come to live with us for just one year, they remain a member of our family forever. Tonight with me is my German son, Ola, and two other YFU students, Andreas and Lars from Denmark. I've gotten to know Andreas and Lars as well this past year, and I can tell you that all three young men are outstanding ambassadors for their countries, and all have certainly done their part to further YFU's mission of fostering peace through understanding. It's my hope that all of us here tonight and across Parkway will consider hosting, and together, we can all help make our community, our schools, and the world a more peaceful place. Thank you.
Ola Bear?
Hi. I'm staying with Stephen Rutherford, 1929 Pine Run Drive. And to be honest, before I came and I got my information about where I'm placed and about my whole family, and I told myself, "Ola, you're happy with everywhere you go. You're okay with the West Coast, you're okay with the East Coast, you're just not in the middle." When I opened my letter and I looked up, I saw St. Louis, never heard of that before in Missouri, not either. And then I looked it up on Google Maps, and I found out it's wide in the middle. And then, but now, I think I'm here since nine months, and I really can't imagine being somewhere else. And yeah, my favorite class is math with Mr. Holman, and I've never seen a math teacher who's more happy to teach his class than he is. Before class, he asked, like when everybody wants, everybody's in the classroom, he asked for permission if he can start earlier because he's so excited to start class. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Parkway or to you for allowing Parkway Central students to attend Parkway Central. Thank you.
Andreas Larson?
My name is Andreas Larson. I live in 14358 Markham Lane. I'm a Parkway Central student, and I'm a YFU student from Denmark. I'm really happy to go to Parkway Central, and I'm really pleased that you guys are allowing students all around the world to go to Parkway Central. It's a nice experience to be able to learn about the American culture and go to high school at Parkway, and to make new friends, and also to talk to Americans about my own culture. One of the biggest surprises I had was the school spirit, because there's way more school spirit over here than I'm used to. All the kids are proud of their school, they show up to all the football games, basketball games, so on, and they show their school spirit and cheer for their teams. I myself went to two football games at home, and it was amazing. Also, one of the things that makes Parkway an amazing place is the learning environment and also the classes. First semester, I took a class called History of St. Louis. I never think I've learned as much in any class than that class. And also, my teacher, Mr. Sellers, who also became my favorite teacher, because of him, I took two other classes with him this semester, Government and Crime and Law. And from September to March, I was a part of the Parkway Central Speak and Debate Team. It's an amazing experience, but also hard work to research cases, research topics, write cases, and also present in front of people. But with the help of my coach, Mr. Profit, I became way better at debating and also presenting in front of people. And that's good, because I want to become a politician or a lawyer one day. And with his help, I got a fourth place at a LDU tournament and a second place at a Parkway North tournament. And also, thank you. And last, I would like to thank you all again for allowing students from all around the world to go to Parkway School. Thank you.
Thank you, Andreas. My mother's from Denmark, and I happened to be in Denmark last year at the time when the students were graduating. Talk about school spirit. They drive around in these trucks, and they're screaming, and there's music blasting, and it was quite an experience. I saw some Denmark school spirit. It was very unique. We were glad to have you here. And I'm not sure that I've got this right. La Vrita?
Lars.
Lars?
Yeah.
And how'd you say your last name? So?
Okay. My name is Lars So. I live in Chesterfield, Cross Trails 14193. And I'm here to thank Parkway Central High School for allowing exchange students every year. And also thank all the teachers and students for making me and my two other exchange student friends over there having such a great time here. Since day one, Parkway Central feel like more than just a school, feel like a home, and that's because of the teachers and the students. All help each other and take care of each other. And that's why I would like to say thank you to all the teachers, makes Parkway Central such a great place. Thank you.
Which country did you come?
I'm from Denmark, sorry.
Wonderful. And Joe Stemler?
Parkway Board members, I thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. My name is Joe Stemler, 1841 Chelmsford Court. I'm the father of sons in Parkway Preschool, Northeast Middle, and North High. I recognize that each of you has a challenging task and that you have accomplished many things for students in the district. However, you've also missed a chance to make a substantial improvement to the sex and healthy relationships curriculum. From December 2014 onward, I participated in advisory council work and raised my ideas for improvement that the final curriculum did not include. The curriculum could have included the need to accept all human beings with respect, compassion, and sensitivity. It could have protected the innocence of our youngest children, thus countering the sexualization of youth that is being put upon them by our media-saturated culture. It could have taught the amazing biological processes that work in concert to bring a new human being. It could have taught how embryo and fetus are stages of human development, just as our toddler and teenager. It could have taught that infertility and reduced fertility are challenges for many couples. It could have taught that miscarriage can be a difficult and painful reality for parents. It could have taught about the process of childbirth. It could have taught about the effects of breastfeeding on the mother and the child. It could have taught that sexual intimacy should always be free of coercion. It could have taught that pornography, like drugs, is addictive and damaging. It could have taught that divorce is a grave event that has negative effects not only on the couple, but on the children who have a human right to know and be raised by the parents when possible. The curriculum does not teach these, and that is a loss for all the students in Parkway. I will continue to teach my sons these things at home. There, I will also be able to teach them values I hold, such as the duty of every man is to protect the dignity of every woman. I ask that the agents of the district do not teach them otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. 8.0, approval of agenda. May I ask for a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education schedule for May 4, 2016? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 6-0. Resolutions, there are none. 10.0 Communications. 10.01 Introduction of New Administrators. I'd like to call on Jennifer Stanfield, our Director of Choice Programs, who will introduce Fern Ridge Leader to us.
Yes. Good evening, President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Peasold. It is my honor and privilege to stand before you tonight and introduce you to Michael Macklin, who will be joining the Parkway community as Coordinator of Fern Ridge and Missouri Options. I had the privilege of spending a lot of time with Mr. Macklin throughout the interview process, and during that time, I have been ultimately impressed by his achievements. He comes to us most recently from University City, where he has served as the Principal of University City High School since 2012. Prior to that, he served Maplewood, Richmond Heights as a counselor, assistant principal, and also served as a teacher here in Parkway, and is a Parkway Central grad. So we're very excited to welcome him home. In 2015, he earned the Educator of the Year Award, and he has had many successes at both of his previous districts in showing and being part of leading games. When I reviewed the candidate feedback sheets that all of the folks and stakeholders write as they interview and listen to our candidates speak, there were many, many trends, and what I saw a lot was passion, enthusiasm, commitment, vision, experience, and high expectations for all. One of the quotes that I heard from a student was, "You need to hire him now." So we are just super thrilled to have him joining our team. Thank you.
Thank you. I am extremely excited to be here. I'm extremely excited to serve the students of Parkway School District and to serve Fern Ridge. Thank you very much.
Next, I'm going to call up Jenny Profit.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Stephanie Valli, who will be the new middle school STEM coordinator. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Stephanie Valley, who will be the new middle school STEM Coordinator. Yay. I had the privilege of, um, being on the interview committee and then Courtney Jaeger and I, uh, took Stephanie out to a couple of schools and we got to see her interact with kids and teachers and it was a great experience. So, Stephanie comes to us from the Rittner School District where she has served as the instructional facilitator and curriculum coordinator. Her major responsibilities have been developing and implementing K-12 Project Lead the Way. She's also served as a Project Lead the Way District Delegate. She's coordinated and administrated the third through eighth grade spring break camp in the Rittner District. She's organized and directed curriculum development in science, social studies, math, reading and writing for grades pre-K through 12. She's collaborated and consulted with teachers and administrators for direct support and has provided professional development and training for teachers and administrators. We are very excited to have her join the TLA team.
Thank you. Um, I am absolutely thrilled, um, that I've been selected for this position. I've spent the last six years, really, um, you can hear from, from what she listed, a bunch of different, um, places. And to really have a focus of STEM education, it is what I am most passionate about. Um, and to have the opportunity to serve the middle school students here in Parkway, um, it's truly an honor. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Well, to both Stephanie and Michael, we welcome you to Parkway and I know as a board, we look forward to the things that you'll do in Parkway, the students that'll be impacted by you and we're just glad to have you on the team. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jacob, I'd like to tell the board that I had a chance to be involved in both processes a bit and, uh, there were some fine candidates. So, uh, these two individuals, uh, have survived a pretty thorough process, uh, with a lot of competition. Uh, there were some really worthy candidates, both internally and externally, and, and we're very, very proud to have them join us.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Next, we'll, uh, look at our calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 8th, 2016 at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle School, with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. And there will be a board retreat on June 3rd and 4th. Don't be fooled by the word retreat. It's a lot of work and it, we don't, and we don't go very far away either.
Down the road.
Ten point O three, board liaison reports. Does anyone have any board liaison reports they'd like to make? Yes, Debbie?
Um, it was a very busy month of April for attending a lot of different events. Um, but the one that I'll report on that, um, I was, uh, the representative from Parkway was with the, uh, Special School District banquet. It's their end of the year banquet to award students within, um, who are receiving services from the Special School District, to, uh, award them with, uh, a variety of different grants, scholarships and recognitions for their hard work and the participation, uh, with Parkway as well. So I sat with, um, uh, several families within Parkway, uh, who were receiving awards that evening and it was a very heartwarming, um, event. Steve Stanger was there, uh, a lot of superintendents and other school districts from around, uh, the St. Louis County area were there as well, um, supporting their, uh, their schools and their students that are in the Special School District. Uh, so I was very, uh, moved and, uh, very honored to represent Parkway at that event. Uh, we also attended the Let's Move event, uh, this past, uh, Sunday at Parkway North High School. Mr. Raythed and, uh, Mr. Jacob were there as well. So that was a lot of fun. Uh, we got a little muddy, um, but, uh, it was a lot of fun and, uh, thank you to Ron Ramspot and his crew for putting that event on. The kids had, I think it was, uh, an extraordinarily well-attended event. It was far more than what they had anticipated. Um, they ran out of, uh, some little panda bear headbands that the kids wanted. I think the first 200 people got one and they had sold out within like the first hour that we were there. So, um, it was very well-attended and everybody had fun regardless of, uh, of the, uh, them, all the mud that everybody got into. It was still a lot of fun. It was a ninja, the American Ninja Warrior, um, theme. So everybody came out for that. It was a lot of fun. Um, and then,
a note today from Mr. Ramspot and there was, uh, 1,345, uh, participants at the, at the event. And it was a bit muddy. Uh, I think I ruined a pair of shoes, but, uh, nonetheless, it was a lot of fun, but, yeah. But, uh, well-attended. I think the, Ron, I think the, where's Ron? The most, the most ever attending, right, event?
Uh, the other event that several of us were at was, um, uh, about heroin. That was, uh, presented on April the 27th. Uh, this was a community partnership with our Alliance for Community Health Partners. Uh, just a phenomenal event. Uh, again, very heartwarming, very touching, um, scary to think about, um, that we're living amongst one of the highest incidences and rates of, of heroin that's occurring within, um, the, the metro region. So, uh, to hear the, the stories and to know the one thing that really compelled me was that, um, no parent can ever say, "Not my kid." And so we all have to be very vigilant and think that, um, we're, nobody is immune to the problems that heroin is creeping in. So, uh, my family took it upon themselves to clear out our medicine cabinet of all expired drugs, took them to the Baldwin Police Department and, um, so I would encourage others to do the same. Um, we also had our appreciation gala, um, on April the 25th. I know a lot of other people attended that as well. Somebody else wants to talk about some of those other events too?
I'll talk about the gala. I just wanted to say that, uh, Bill and Baron did a fantastic job. My cheeks were hurting so bad from smiling and laughing all night. Kudos to you guys and everyone who was responsible for putting that on. It was fantastic.
Any others?
I wanted to say that it was a longstanding time for me and Kim, but we really enjoyed, um, the appreciation event. It was great seeing a lot of teachers and the efforts you guys put in. I mean, it's amazing that, you know, so many teachers were appreciated. I just wish that that number keep growing and we can just have a one grand gala that we appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say, uh, I'm an honorary Parkway Ninja Warrior. And I got my picture taken between the two warriors there that are on the eighth season, uh, just wonderful. And, I mean, it, it was really a great event. And we wanted to say thank you to Ron and all the volunteers. Uh, that took a lot of volunteers to make that work as well as it did. I understand there's a video, uh, there's one where you grab a, a tube there and hold on and they roll you. And I think there's a Twitter feed with Ron and, uh, he's, he screamed like a baby. I also attended, just before the, uh, Heroin Town Hall, I went down to Barnes there to attend the Med Talks, which is our experiential learning there for, uh, students that are learning about medicine. And what a great event that was. These were 15 wonderful kids that, my goodness, uh, one of the things they had to do was present, uh, a talk on some subject with medicine and it was detailed and good and, I mean, they were wonderful and very excited about what they're doing. So that was a lot of fun. And then, uh, some of you may have seen the video, uh, introduction that Dr. Marty and I did for Teacher Appreciation Week. The feedback was, "You're no Bill, no Baron."
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
We do appreciate our teachers this week.
Mr. Jacob, I just also want to mention that our administrative, uh, team, our Supertans Action Team had a chance to be part of the, uh, Monday morning welcoming of the Taiwanese, uh, group, uh, at Claymont. This is the second year that they've welcomed, uh, uh, parents and educators and students. And they actually, very proud. The Claymont community has really adopted, uh, this now the second year and, uh, some families are hosting as many as three guests in their home for a week. Uh, this is part of a St. Louis, um, storytelling, uh, event that's, I think it's at Amstel. And a lot of the, uh, people are coming to be part of that, but they're spending a lot of time at Claymont and around the St. Louis area. But it was a wonderful morning and we heard some storytelling on both, uh, the American students from Claymont and, uh, the Taiwanese students. And it was just, uh, again, as, uh, Mr. Rutherford said, it's just wonderful to be able to have that international, uh, opportunity for our students.
Thank you very much. There are no subcommittee reports at this time. There is an upcoming subcommittee meeting, uh, May 10th, 2016 at 3:00 PM, HR Finance Subcommittee Meeting. That'll be at, at the Administrative Center. And eleven point O, action items consent. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the May 4th, 2016 Board Materials?
So moved.
Second?
So, second.
I meant, is there a second? I'm sorry. I wasn't. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed at this time? And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any? There are none. The motion carries six zero. Twelve point zero, action items. There are none. Thirteen point O, policy review. Policy DN dot BP, disposal of surplus material. Are there any questions? I know Eric is ready and anxious to talk to us about surplus material and if there are none, then, uh, that'll be on the, uh, consent item next time for approval. Thank you, Eric. Actually, if you looked at it, uh, he simplified the policy some so that the guidelines will be the major part next time. And at this point, fourteen point O, we've been looking forward to the evaluation of the Fine Arts Program. Jeff Lackey, our Fine Arts Coordinator, will make that presentation to us.
Good evening, President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Peazold. It is my pleasure this evening to present to you the Fine Arts Program Evaluation. Fine Arts, as you know, is a very large program in Parkway. We consult of visual art, music, theater. My presentation tonight is without showmanship. It's a long presentation, so I'll speed up. So I don't have any of the thousands of music clips and the thousands of videos I could show you. As much as I would love to, we would be here all night. So reviewing the process a little bit. And it's not on. This process began back in August where we had the teachers meet together on the first day of school. And we reviewed what questions we would like to ask in the program evaluation and all Fine Arts staff actually were at that meeting and were gathered together to present the topics that we wanted to and the guiding questions. In September, that was presented to Project Parkway and then later in September presented to the Board of Education by Nathan Tyson. And then surveys were distributed and taken between November and December. The topics and guiding questions, um, when we got together to actually start this process, we realized that we actually missed a topic and that was mission and vision. So that was not originally presented to you, but we decided to ask a question on mission and vision and does the Parkway, um, Fine Arts Curriculum contribute to Parkway's mission and vision? Topic two was curriculum. Is the curriculum vertically aligned? Is it aligned with national standards? Is it equitable, relevant? Does it foster creativity and curiosity? Does it prepare students for the future? Topic three, assessments and achievements, products and performance. Does it, does our assessments and achievements reflect student knowledge? Are they grade level appropriate? Do they meet the needs of all students? Do products and performances, are students able to express their content knowledge? Are they competitive and recognized? And are, how are the systems and structures in Parkway supportive of those? Topic four was resources. How are resources distributed across all levels, schools and programs? Are they up to date on technology and are teachers trained to use it? Do resources match the curricular needs and is professional development relevant, accessible and timely? Topic five was communication. We looked at, is communication effective and timely? Is Parkway Fine Arts Program connected to the community and how much does the community actually know about Fine Arts Program? Topic six was about facilities. We looked at two separate things. We looked at instructional space and performance space. And so that brings us to the big picture. In Parkway, we have fifteen thou, over 15,000 students involved this year in a Fine Arts course of some sort, which is about 86% of our student population. In elementary, that is about 100%. In middle school, that breaks up to 82%. And in high school, that's about 69% of our students. Also, we, we sent surveys out to elementary students, to secondary students, to parents, to alumni, to teachers, to administrators. And we had over 8,000, nearly 9,000 returned responses. And it breaks up, as you can see there, where we had a significant amount of students take the survey during their classes and quite a few alumni and parents. One of the surprising things that we came across in the surveys where there were a few times where the students were, or the participants were able to comment, take the time to give us their feedback. And we had nearly 19,000 times that someone took the time to comment, dominating much of the committee's time, um, in, in, in work in January. So if we break this up, we'll look at each topic real quick. Mission and vision. Topic one, a majority of all students, uh, I'm sorry, a majority of all groups agreed or strongly agreed that the students are capable, curious and confident and that Parkway Fine Arts helped to contribute that. Students and parents and alumni showed strongest agreement in the confident area. Moving on to topic two, curriculum, which is a little longer. Teachers strongly agreed that the curriculum is vertically and horizontally aligned. Teachers and administrators agreed that it's accessible for all students. Interestingly enough, the administrators' confidence level dropped slightly when looking at, is it accessible based on all factors? Meaning is it race, ethnicity, gender, um, social economics, social economic status, et cetera? Is the curriculum, is the curriculum relevant? There was strong agreement among teachers and administrators that both it was relevant to the ever-changing global community and it was relevant to students. Secondary students and alumni strongly agreed that our curriculum provides a variety of choices. That may be hard to read at 74% and 86%. And that the curriculum fosters creativity. Teachers and administrators both had strong agreements in that area. When asked if they're prepared to move to the next level, meaning if you're an elementary student, are you ready to move to middle school? If you're a middle school moving up, one of the challenges of this program evaluation is that we are a very large department. And so on that slide, which could be very difficult to read, you have band, choir, orchestra, general music, theater and visual arts. And what you would actually notice, the trend tends to be, although all agreed, that the majority do feel prepared, the agreement tends to increase the longer they're enrolled in that program. Was the cost to participate reasonable? In this chart, you'll see the same categories moving along. Um, again, it's a large program, so the chart may be difficult to read. The orange bars are starting to show disagreement. Where a majority of all groups agreed, the cost was reasonable. There's a slight elevation in disagreement amongst high schools, um, band and high school choir, um, typically due to marching band fees, festivals, competitions, tours, is the assumption that we made on that. We asked alumni, it was actually asked at the board when we presented this, what is the participation level of our alumni after high school? And so we asked our highs, our, our alumni and we surveyed, just to clarify, the last three years of alumni. And, and this was a, a nice, uh, surprise, that 22% of the alumni that took the survey are actually majoring, minoring or pursuing a career in fine arts. So nearly a quarter. Half of them are still particip, 48% are still participating in some form of fine art, whether that be in a school or in a community. And 75 or 74% of them, um, said that the education they received in Parkway prepared them to continue participation in fine arts. Something we were actually really proud of. Helped in other areas of my, uh, our, our lives, we know that fine arts attributes to other areas beyond just the classroom. And when we asked the alumni there, how fine arts affected, there was a large agreement amongst all groups and alumni that said it was very helpful in other areas of the lives. In curriculum comments alone, we received over 13,000 comments. So this is the largest portion of the comment section, mostly from students. And so if you kind of look at the trends, 73% of the comments were positive and as you can see up there, it's the quality of the curriculum, the variety of courses, engagement for all, freedom to express and be creative, uh, collaboration with others, the hands-on experiences they get and the community connections they're able to make. Looking at the negative comments, and I use negative, maybe a little flexible here, maybe more suggestions, it's actually always more. They want more of. And so the 27% of comments that we saw were on the negative trend where they wanted more fine arts courses. They wanted more core, uh, more finance time in class. They wanted more courses. They want more AP or honors options for high school. They want more fine arts during the school day. That was more elementary. And, uh, it was an interesting trend. They want more clay, especially the elementary kids want more clay. And that, um, that was just a fun topic coming up. When we get to topic three, assessments and achievement, product and performance. We asked if the students were able to produce, um, if they're able to show their content and knowledge through their product and performance. And 98% of teachers and 84% of administrators agreed that students were able to show their knowledge through their products or performances. And then we asked where, um, how do those products and performances meet the community expectation? And then we asked where, how do those products and performances meet the community expectations? They felt that ninety percent of teachers and eighty-four percent of administrators felt positive that what they were doing was right. So we asked the parents the same thing, and our parents agreed. They strongly agreed that we do meet or exceed. And again, the longer they're in that program, the agreement tends to rise. Then we asked the question about our growth assessments, and that's where our number drops. And so this is one of the surprising figures, not so surprising, but something that was interesting and shows some work that we need to do, is that if you look at the first chart there, do our common district assessments, the assessments we give students at the beginning and end of their course, are they able to reflect their knowledge in that assessment? And that's where we see a large drop. So if we go back two slides before, ninety-eight percent of teachers said that their product and performance was able to demonstrate their knowledge. And then we go to the assessment, and we see a fifty-three percent of teachers agree they're able to produce, showing that we need to do some work around that area. The next chart over shows, is it grade level appropriate? And then the next three charts are really showing the adaptability to measure all students. And so this graph and this chart and the data we received in the program file shows that we have some work to do around our common assessments that we do in fine arts. We also asked about student opportunities to participate in fine arts. And one of the topics that came up when we surveyed, or when we gathered together to create the questions, was elementary strings. As you know, in third grade, we offer elementary strings to all. And so we asked, is this still a valid program? Is this something we should consider? And eighty percent of parents agreed that third grade strings is something that is doing well and should continue. However, what about beyond third grade? Sometimes students choose not to continue beyond third grade, and sometimes, or often, we have students come into Parkway after third grade, and what's their opportunity? And so we asked, should we be offering strings, an entry-level strings course beyond third grade? And parents said forty-six percent agreed. My clicker's not working. Fifty-one percent of teachers agreed, and sixty-three percent of administrators agreed that this is something Parkway should consider doing. Looking at other departments, we looked at band. In sixth grade, is the current structure in Parkway is that we offer beginning band in sixth grade. And so we asked, again, that's an isolated time that we offer instruction, should we offer beyond sixth grade? And sixty-four percent of parents and sixty-three percent of administrators agreed that there should be other entry points beyond sixth grade. Visual arts, in visual art, you receive visual art education beginning at kindergarten in Parkway. It is an all-year process at least once a week. When you get to sixth grade, it's isolated down to a six-week. Though it's every day, it's down to six weeks of instructions. And so the teachers, when we gathered around to come up with these questions, they really wanted to ask, is that something that, are we meeting the community expectations? Are we meeting what we should, based on what they consider more of a bottleneck feel in sixth grade? And so when surveying that out, seventy-four percent of the parents and seventy-two percent of the teachers felt that we need to offer something more than a six-week instruction in visual arts in sixth grade. Similar to theater, though theater and drama is a beginning section in sixth grade, that also came back with seventy-one percent of parents and sixty-five percent of teachers would like to see more instruction than six weeks of instruction in sixth grade. Over fifty percent of our Parkway students in high school would like to some, see some form of AP or honors course option offered in their particular content level. And then we had a few staff concerns that came up as we asked about systems and structures. Both the elementary and the middle school teachers said that planned time is a struggle, and that thirty-two percent of administrators said that they were unhappy with the way fine arts are scheduled during the day. When digging into that information a little bit more, we noticed that most of those comments come from elementary and most revolved around how elementary is, strings are scheduled and staffed during the day. Other staff concerns were class sizes. We actually asked the question, is it too small? Is it just right or is it too big? Very Goldilocks. But most were very happy and very, no, I don't think anybody said they were too small. But we actually had all of the orchestra, and that chart is elementary orchestra, middle school orchestra, high school orchestra in that order. So a hundred percent of our orchestra staff are saying at some point in time that their classes are a little too big. High school theater, we had a hundred percent say that they're too large, and there was some concern in visual art as well. We received comments in this, of course, as well. And seventy-three percent positive comments included things like student success is important to the teachers, performances and competitions, high expectations, outside opportunities provided, able to achieve high levels, they feel successful, and they're able to create, or be able to produce creative projects. The negative comments, again, typically revolved around wanting more for this category. And that was more student art displayed, that actually came from administrators and parents, more experiential learning, and more performance opportunities. Topic four was resources, everyone's favorite topic, budget. This chart is a little confusing to read at first, but though a majority of teachers agree both at the building level and the district level, they are being supported, twenty-five percent disagree to some level. And this chart shows, if you're taking time to look at it, you have teachers are in red and administrators are in orange here. That's not a disagree next to an agree chart, so it takes a minute to see. Findings in looking at budget resources, we did look at district-wide and building-wide. Other findings is that we found inconsistencies in the way we, resources, budget resources are distributed across grade levels, and we found that there were inconsistencies across district by content. And so a student attending one elementary school versus another elementary school might see a significant difference in the funding provided for them in, for example, visual arts. That said, on a footnote, that data is only based on this year's budget only. That is not something that we looked at over a longer period of time. Other resources looking in fine arts was sheet music was actually received very well. Instrumentation did really well, except in band and elementary or, sorry, middle school orchestra and elementary orchestra, mostly due to just the aging of the instruments, which is hard to keep up with at times. Visual art consumables and visual art equipment did very well. Textbooks and tech support, I want to focus on textbooks. The green bars are, they were satisfied, and the red bars are dissatisfied. And as you will notice, their instructional resources are getting outdated in some of our areas, not all content areas in fine arts actually use a textbook. So this is a difficult question. But the ones that do have been purchased a long time ago, and it may be time, it is time to look at different, an updating resources and out, if I want to call them textbooks at this time, but in a review of our resources that we have for things like AP art history and things like that. Resource comments, we had fifty-three percent positive comments that teacher, or resources to teachers, and I love how they talk about the teachers' content knowledge and skills, that the quality of fine arts teachers that we have in our school, and the access to instruments and other resources not available at home. The negative comments, and this time they do start showing, they want more time, that keeps popping up consistently, the need for newer instruments, that came mostly from staff, more funding, performance spaces, though we have a topic, we'll get to that later, this creeps up in everything we did. Mac and iPads and other Apple product support, better partnerships, though we'll talk about that a little bit later, more technology in fine arts classrooms, smaller class sizes, and better classroom, and that's back to facilities, better performance facilities is in there again, and parents would like to see more experiential learning and professional exposure if possible. Topic five, communication or connection to the community. We asked parent, or, yeah, how parents felt connected to the program, and both in choir and band, both middle school and high school did very well, while secondary orchestra, theater, and general music did well. Elementary was the area that, though they're doing well, we could make improvements, and visual arts was an area that showed that we could improve communication. We have many partners in Parkway, some specific to fine arts. We have partners such as Manchester Arts, Stages, Civic Orchestra, and Arts Unleashed, which have provided our students and our schools many, many options and many opportunities that we normally would not be able to offer. And so we asked how our partnerships were going, and they wanted to know, are they beneficial? And this was interesting data, and when you see this chart, it's deceiving. It's actually positive, though it may look negative. Thirty-eight percent of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that they see benefit in the partnerships, and forty-seven percent of administrators. The larger picture is, we had many people mark the no opinion or I'm not sure category. In fact, teachers, forty-two percent were neutral on this, administrators, thirty-one percent were neutral. And we actually had comments on this that they don't know what they are. They would like to respond, but they just don't know what the partnership is. And then also, when you pull the data on this, it's interesting because it depends on the region that the school is in. So Manchester Arts, for example, is in Manchester. And the schools in Manchester were much more receptive to the benefits that they've seen from Manchester Arts than maybe other areas and regions in our district. And so unfortunately, that chart doesn't necessarily show the bigger picture. Parents know what students are learning. Again, that was strongly agreed by all parents. Ten, once again, the trend tends to be to increase the longer they're in the program. Communication comments, we received over a thousand comments in this. Fifty-three percent were positive, that they felt a strong sense of community, that the positive community support. The negative comments, forty-seven percent. Parents, more communication needed from the fine art staff. Parents want to know more about the programs. Parents would like to see more artwork come home. Commu, sorry, communication needs, needed from teacher prior to reporting periods if student is struggling. And parents want community events pushed out to them. Though we have a fine arts calendar that is available to them, they still want something a little bit more easy to be pushed out to them. Then we get to facilities. This is broken up into two areas. One was instructional and one was in performance spaces. In instructional space, and I gave you this chart, and it's not easy to read, but I'll kind of highlight some of the things. It really varies based on the age of the building and the past improvements that have been done. And so it's hard to see a big picture on this. The thing to note, and you can't see very well, but the numbers in red are the unfavorable responses. And in this chart, we start seeing the numbers creep up a little bit in the instructional space. And when you dig in a little bit, we've done significant work at the high schools, it tends to be in the middle schools and the elementaries amongst the comments. And most of the concerns tend to be around class space, storage space, and how the room is equipped. For example, are there humidity controls for rooms that are hosting string instruments? Are there acoustical accommodations meant for rooms that might be holding music or need to be soundproofed? And then we get into the performance space categories. We asked, is the space large enough? And my clicker's not working. There we go. And the part to look here is really, the reds are fifty percentish or lower, and the orange is the disagreement. At this point, we started seeing higher numbers in disapproval or unfavorable responses than any other spot in our surveys. Then we asked, is there enough seating? You'll see that the red goes down, orange starts going up. And then we asked, are they, let me say the question right, are they well-suited for all performances? And that was the one that was the most evident. And nearly all groups at this point are less than fifty percent in agreement, and our disagreement numbers are higher. We received over eight hundred and sixty-one comments specifically referencing facilities or instructional spaces. And actually, we received more than that. This is the time that they were supposed to comment on facilities and performance spaces. Again, they commented as the survey went on. It wasn't till the end that they had the opportunity to comment on this, and they still had a lot to say. This was the most passionate, the most concerning area. And if you can't read those numbers, we had ninety-seven percent negative comments on facilities. It was hard to find positive things when it was time to talk about our facilities. We had a hundred percent negative from administrators, a hundred percent negative from secondary students, some slight positive comments here and there. Comments that were positive were, we were able to use Logan, we were able to use Two Hill, we were able to use that. But when talking to something specific to Parkway, we had a difficult time. So I don't have trends for you in positive comments. The negative trends tended to be, space is limited, a need for better or larger facilities, classrooms and performance spaces are too small, too small for audiences, audiences have a hard time seeing and hearing performances, parking is difficult, acoustics are poor, audience seating is poor, the spaces are crowded, it's not equitable to other school districts around Parkway. And that came up, and to briefly say, if you go to other school districts that surround Parkway, at the high school level or district level, there's a performance facility that our students and parents and teachers see that they don't see in Parkway. And then the last one was classrooms are overcrowded in the elementary. On a good note, other findings that we found is that when asking our students, elementary and secondary students, the overall rating of their class, we're doing very, very, very well. Other high ratings that came from our alumni and our current students were teachers show high interest in their progress, teachers expect high-quality work, classes are interesting, class time is used well, and they would recommend one of the fine arts courses to their peers. Which brings us to our recommendations. One, we need to update our curriculum to the national and state standards. Not pointed out in the survey, but it is in the report you saw. National standards came out about a year and a half ago, and we have not had the opportunity to update. We're still living in the nineteen ninety-four national standards. We are up to date in our state standards, but this is work that we need to do. So it's recommended that we align our curriculum to the new national standards, and that we maintain alignment with the state, as the state may change theirs, not that there is national standards update. Two, that we develop and improve our district common assessments. As pointed out, we have some varied opinions on what students can produce through their product and performance and demonstrate versus what they can do in an assessment. So we need to incorporate more performance-based measures in district common assessments. We need to develop assessments that can be adapted or modified for all students. And we need to develop assessments that emphasize skill. Still keeping content knowledge, but maybe more skill-based since that's what we tend to focus more on. Three, to study and develop class sizes and scheduling recommendations for fine arts, develop teacher-student ratio recommendations for fine arts courses, and update our elementary string staffing model. Four, develop and standardize fine arts instructional spaces, I'm sorry, instructional resources, jumping the gun. Develop replacement and refresh policies for instructional resources, that could be textbooks. Inventory of fine arts assets, which we're currently in the process of doing. Study and standardize technology needs. Explore district-wide per-pupil budget allocations. And adapt and standardize instructional resources such as technology, textbooks, subscriptions, equipment, instrumentation, et cetera. Five, provide additional opportunities for students to access the fine arts courses. Provide multiple entry points for students to enroll in strings beyond third grade. Provide multiple entry points for students to enroll in band beyond sixth grade. Provide high school with more advanced placement options if possible. Explore opportunities to expand middle school art and theater. Explore ways to provide more fine arts opportunities to elementary students. And I want to pause here for a minute. Explore the reinstitution of the dance program. Going back to the two thousand and eight program evaluation, which was the last time we did this, one of the recommendations to the Board of Education was that we expand the dance program. In two thousand and nine, the dance program was discontinued. And so since we're cycling this out, I'm going to pull back in, we're not expanding, but we need to re-investigate what a dance program looks like. I believe the PE health evaluation said the same, and it could be an interdisciplinary course that we can look at reinstitution. Study and monitor retention rates among fine arts programs, of course. Six, improve fine arts instructional performance spaces. Develop recommendations for fine arts instructional spaces. Develop recommendations for building level and district level performance spaces. And then the last recommendation we had was, continue to build our partnerships with the community. To expand partnerships to include regional partners and content-specific partners. Based on that survey data we got, there was a lot of unknown, so, and some want for some what they call better partners. I think that we just need to look for more specific needs in our department. And to really improve the communication of our current partnerships to our staff and the benefits of our, to our students and community. And that brings us to questions.
Board members, do you have any questions for Jeff?
You and I had this conversation, how many years ago, about the performance space? We were in this room, right? So is there, is there a thought that a performance space could accommodate all the needs of our district? So is there, is there a thought that a performance space could accommodate all the needs of our district, one space?
I think you would get varying opinions on that. I think that that's a larger conversation. However, I think it's something we should investigate.
Because I think, I think you have to answer that question before you can make any progress and...
The goal is when we develop some recommendations that we will be looking at building recommendations and district-level recommendations, and having a list of pros and cons to going one way or the other, to present that to you.
And are we fully utilizing the opportunity to partner with the religious institutions that surround our district? Because I know I've been to concerts in that church at Manchester one forty-one where the acoustics were fabulous.
Yes.
And I know there are other places in our, in our district that have those kind of facilities. And could we do a better job of partnering with them so that we could use those facilities?
We do, they actually do a, we do pay for use of those facilities typically.
Well, paying for those is cheaper than building our own.
So we do pay for those. We do rent out many facilities, Logan, Two Hill, Queenie, we just had our art show at Queenie. Yes, Manchester United Methodist, I think is what you're referring to. We do rent, rent out and utilize even Missouri Baptist at times. So we do, we reach out to them. Yes.
I mean, I guess if you, if you added it all up financially to see if what we pay by renting out those spaces would come anywhere close to what it would cost us to build and maintain a space of our own?
No, I think you would find that renting is significantly less than actually building our own.
Right, yeah. Okay, it's an ongoing question.
With what we did, Jeff, here at Parkway Central Middle School, when we had the addition put on here and we did the choir room and so, was that the right, we did it right?
Yes. So it's taking things like that, so the work that we did here at Central Middle and looking at it, standardizing it and saying, so as we move in and so we work on a building or we renovate a building, I don't think we would be recommending we go through the Parkway and fix everything we see. But as we look at fixing up buildings or building buildings, if we have a standardized set, here's what the choir room should look like, here's what the band room should look, here's what a visual art room should look like.
And these national standards you're talking about, how do they differ from, just generally from what we have today?
Higher up, they're similar to when we, when the core areas moved into their new standards. The national fine arts standards is similar in the way they wrote them. They didn't call them core standards as much, but they are more about the long-term gain. So instead of worrying about the element and the principle of art, maybe the enduring understanding is a little higher and what's the relevant for music, it might be focusing more on creating. Producing and performing is still going to be there, but more emphasis on the creating aspect and connecting to the community, et cetera.
So first of all, I know you must be tired and ready to be done with it, but thank you for this great information. So a couple of questions, like Beth asked is, what are, how are we partnering with our community? So that was one of them. I had the one specific is, love what you do and do what you love. And it makes a big difference when you blend that in the kids that are studying and you give them something that they enjoy. How is the performance of the students impact from those who take the courses versus they don't take it or they drop? How is the performance?
Could you clarify what you mean?
So like, for example, ten students in the class, five take the fine arts courses and five don't. Have you tried to compare the performance analytics and see how that impacts?
No, we've not done that yet.
Just see, because it would be something interesting, you can find out that sometimes, you know, those take, the things that they love can make a big difference in their performance. And, you know, it would be a great idea to look into that way.
I agree.
Are we doing enough or less compared to other schools in terms of finance?
How are we doing?
Compared to the other school districts?
We did not look at other school districts. And, yeah, yeah, we did not look at other school district budgets when we looked at this program. This was an internal look only.
Okay. And then also on the, because I have an analytics background and a Six Sigma, so I apologize for asking so many questions. But timing of the classes, I heard some had concerns about the timing of the classes. Have you tried to look at the performance of having classes in the first half of the day versus the second half of the day? And how that impacts the performance of the students in terms of their academics?
Sure, it depends on the grade level. It depends on the, what they come, if they come into fine arts after PE versus before, or after lunch versus before, all those things are factors. The complaints that we received primarily for the scheduling were in elementary, and it has to do with how we schedule our elementary string staff. We have one staff member per every two buildings, and that means they end up being a part-time person in that building. And that locks the schedule. And so our elementary principals, of course, that's harder to work with than a teacher that's assigned to a building all day long was the main concern. Also, that strings is not part of the normal elective or what we call specials at elementary wheel. And so in elementary, students go to an elective, the whole third grade team may, team teachers may have planned, come in plan time as they will go into music or art or PE. But strings is separate. So strings, when they schedule a strings course, typically the way we do it in Parkway is that we pull one teacher, the other two teachers are teaching. And so it's, it becomes just a scheduling, for lack of a better word, nightmare for an elementary principal at times. And they typically have to set the string schedule before they can move into other parts of the building. And so the feedback we received in the program evaluation was talking mostly about, no, we're not real happy with the way that, that works out.
And I promise this will be the last one, is what are the top five fine arts courses and what are the bottom five? Just to see how, you know, we are using.
The top five and bottom five? I wouldn't have that data.
But you can, you can...
When you mean in terms of?
The courses.
The enrollment?
And, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't understand how much and what we offer through the fine arts, what are the programs we offer? And what are the top five programs that, you know, that are very popular and we get more enrollments?
I can, I was gonna say, I can get you enrollment figures, but I wouldn't have that available right now.
Thank you.
What am I, oh, so I just watched Mr. Holland's Opus the other night. So I'm really happy to see that our program is so vibrant and being well-supported and that this district is wrapping its arms around fine arts. I have, my, my children are in fine arts. My son is in band in the middle school and all anxious to go to Branson. So we're just elated that this is going on and continuing to see this as strong as it is. As a former dancer, I'm so happy to hear that you want to bring dance back. Do you, can you tell me what happened that it was discontinued? What was, so that we can understand prior and then what we're looking at now?
My knowledge is a little limited on this. We're researching and finding out, and we have reached out to look at many factors. There were, but there were many factors. One being the interest of students, one being some retirement of staff members, one being budget. There were just many, many factors that accommodated for that. But I don't have a specific answer, and I would, I would feel bad to tell you this is what I think it is without doing more investigation. So at this time, I can get back with you, but I don't have an exact answer for that.
And I'm also wondering what type of dance are you considering? And as we talk about space and facilities and understanding what the requirements are for dance specific to, you know, what you're thinking there?
It was a PE or fine arts credit, and so it was typically done in a PE classroom unless there was another classroom available. So it was, the students could choose which credit they were going to take at the high school level.
Okay. So if you're going to do ballet, for instance?
It was more modern dance at the time.
Modern dance, okay. So that's what I was wondering, what kind of dance are you, you know, trying to?
My memory's cloudy. What I remember is the enrollment had declined on that, and then we had a teacher that was retiring, and we were looking at our budget, and it just didn't make sense to continue at that, at that time. But that's, I don't know, don't quote me, but that's what I am kind of...
Yeah, I was just curious because we don't end up into the same...
But we had a lot of passionate students who really loved it, but it wasn't a large number. I think it was like one section for high school or something.
Right. When we pulled the numbers, the last time it was offered was in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, yeah.
What was the, is the term movement?
More than dance, or is it?
It was called dance.
Dance movement or?
Performance dance.
Okay. Because movement has kind of become the new topic, hasn't it, Ron, or kind of a movement culture? I act like I know something here, but I don't.
And would that be for elementary, middle and high, or what do you think?
The program was high school. It was at all high schools offered, and one, actually Central Middle had offered here as well.
No, I, I believe, and correct me, Ron, but I believe there are PE units in elementary where they do dance, at least little, small units, like line dancing and... Right, right.
And in fine arts in elementary, we have dance parts, portions too, but not isolated.
Yeah.
Square dancing.
Yeah.
In middle school?
No, in elementary, right.
Oh, okay, okay.
You spoke a little bit about one of the problems that you found was inconsistent funding and inconsistent course content. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
So funding, if you refer, if you have your report in front of you, it's on page eleven. You'll see funding numbers for this year, and you'll see it by building. It's broken up to music budget, visual arts budget, the total amount spent, and then it divides it per student, and then down to the amount of enrolled in fine arts for that building. And so the ratios that you can see as you go down that far right-hand corner, at the elementary, it would be nice to have seen more consistent numbers. The thing is, we, we work in different budgeting systems, and we don't have a uniform. We do zero-based budgeting, we do all these other things, and buildings also have needs, and sometimes they have to change their numbers. So if we go back and look at last year's numbers, these might look significantly different. So this was a program, it was a capture of one moment in time of just this year's budget. But my recommendation is that it would be nice to have recommendations for what a visual art classroom should look like budget-wise. And so just jumping down, if you look at high school visual arts, you'll see, you know, fairly consistent, but one school might be funding significantly more than others. That could be due to enrollment, that could be due to the, what they provide for their building, et cetera. And so when you look over to how much that equals per student, it's more normal. So it depends on how you look at that. But that's the work that I would recommend to the Fine Arts Action Team that we would like to look at and maybe push out some recommendations.
And it is content, is that, I just wondered if maybe that was driven a little bit by individual teachers?
Sure, so different teachers have different needs. But the, so we, in the music budgets that you see there, those are going to be for music repair, those are going to be for supplies. And so budgets that are funded at a much lower rate are going to have a difficult time keeping up with repairs. Thus, in turn, we might see a chart with instruments are getting old and outdated and eventually asking for new instruments rather than repairing the, having a sufficient budget enough to keep up with their current instrument.
Very thorough report.
Thank you.
And, you know, as Mrs. Hopper said, I'm also very passionate about this area. My kids did, this was their thing, music especially, but art and drama all through school. And they still participate in music. I have one who's a professional musician. So I, and I credit Parkway for that. It really sparked their interest and really developed them. So thanks to all of our fine arts teachers for what they do, and this was a great report. A lot of work and put into it, we can tell. So thank you for that.
And we, we actually, if I can, just take a moment, we actually had some fine arts staff members here that took the time to be here tonight, and I want to thank them for being here tonight. Thank you, guys.
Yes.
You mentioned about it, I didn't want to bring up, but...
Yeah.
I love music, and in a joke, I was just writing a song, and one of my friends composed it, and it ended up being recorded by Bollywood's top singer. So you can never know what you can end up doing, so.
That's great.
Keep up the good work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Jeff works really hard to foster partnerships. He talked a little bit about that, but we have a partnership with Stages. We have a lot of students that have opportunities at Stages, and Stages, of course, now has their practice facility over in Chesterfield Parkway. Manchester Arts has just taken off the last couple of years, our partnership with them. The Chesterfield Group is now called, what's it called?
Um, Arts Unleashed.
Arts Unleashed, yeah, it used to be Chesterfield Arts. So there's a lot of opportunities to work with groups, and I think that's, you know, to take advantage of those community partnerships is wonderful. We have some of our folks, like Chris Becker directs the Manchester Community Band in the summertime, and so there's a lot of good things happening. Yes, right, the Civic Orchestra, yes. Thanks for mentioning that, yeah. We have a partnership with the St. Louis Civic Orchestra here. So that's a, the whole new dimension, and Jeff has been working hard to continue developing those and foster those. And not that there's, you know, new facilities there, but I know we just had a photography contest at Manchester United that they sponsored. A lot of our students took part in that. So that, that interplay with the community is really neat to see. We're really excited about that potential. It kind of gives Jeff the, a whole new dimension of his job because we have a lot of municipalities, a lot of groups that would like to partner.
We certainly support you, and it's impressive when you look at that and see that almost seventy percent of high school students are involved in some facet of fine arts. Almost a hundred percent in elementary. We know that has an impact on our kids, and we're just so grateful we can do that in Parkway. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I did. Every time I was...
I've seen that movie.
My kids used to complain because that's the only movie that a fine art teacher would show, and I bet they've each seen it twenty-five times. So just a suggestion, there's got to be other movies to show.
I will challenge the idea of wanting to bring more artwork home. I mean, all the artwork I have, I don't, I don't want to throw it away. We take pictures of it, it's like, ah, I put it in a big box, it's downstairs, you know. More artwork, but who? I don't know.
That's funny.
I got, and we got clay. If anybody wants clay, we got clay.
I would make a point, and I really don't want to take up time, but you know, a lot of times, music, all these activities play a bigger role in their development. And if you even want to go down further, think about what can we do for special needs kids and how can we involve fine arts into their life? And that can probably change a whole lot, so.
You know, that, going back to Mrs. Olden.
Uh, Mr. Opus. That's, that movie, by the way, is twenty years old now. That's, that's a, that's a movie that's a long spin around.
And she still cries every time she...
Yeah, I do too. But that, that's a, that's a lesson about, I mean, the reason I cry at the end of that movie is, is what's happened. It was, I saw that once with my children, and they didn't understand why I was crying, and I said, because, you know, just think what would happen in our society without music. And that was, and we're seeing that around the country. I mean, if, unfortunately, when districts have to make tough decisions, they drop things like orchestra programs or art programs. I sat with a woman one time coming back on a flight from a convention from out in Providence, Rhode Island, and she was dropped, taking her child out of a public school because they had dropped most of the art program and her child, I was keeping her child in school. I mean, those are, those stories are just sad to hear. So we could be proud of our support for the, for the arts.
And I would recommend in the culinary arts, maybe the movie No Reservations. That's not because I like Captain Zane Jones. Fifteen-point-oh work session, there is, there is none, and a call for a special meeting, there is none. The next scheduled anticipated closed session will be on Wednesday, June eighth, at twenty sixteen, at six P M. at Central Middle School. Details of the closed meeting will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. And may I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Well, no, well, I, I just want to take a moment.
Sure.
This is Joyce's perhaps last meeting, we never know.
Absolutely.
Nikki will be back next week, and Joyce has done, I just want to say, I think Joyce has done a wonderful job supporting the board and supporting us the last couple of weeks. So I just think she deserves a round of applause.
I have to say, it's a tough job keeping all of us where we need to be and at what time, so you did a great job. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there something else you were going to say?
Well, I guess we can call for a close at the retreat if we need it.
Yeah, we're not sure about the need.
I think, I think we did earlier.
June third, of course, we may, we may have a need to do a...
Okay, never mind.
With an anticipated closed session at, well, no, that's the June eighth. It just says there will be a board.
We'll do it then.
Okay. And again, Joyce, thank you again. We've enjoyed very much your help while Nikki's been away. And I guess she's only coming back part-time, so you may, we may... been away. And I guess she's only coming back part-time, so you may, we may still need you.
She's going to work her way back into it next week.
It's nice to have a, a strong bench like the Cardinals. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.